All right, welcome to this evening's meeting. We're going to have our invocation. By Pastor Charles Hamilton of New Morton Light Baptist Church in Conley. And it will be followed by our Veteran of the Month to give us, to lead us in Pledge of Allegiance, who happens to be this month, Major Ida Weiner. Please stand with me.
Let us pray. Creator God, we thank you so much for bringing us here safely. For Lord, we know that it is through your Spirit we are able to move and do what you've called us to do. So Lord, we pray that all the work we do here today, the work in order to make Clayton County the best county, be done in a seamless matter. Lord, create in us a clean heart, so that we can do the work and do our calling and fulfill it in the way that you've called us to fulfill it. In your Son Jesus's name we pray. Amen? Amen? And amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Welcome to the December 3rd Board of Commissioners Meeting. Our first order of business tonight is adoption of the agenda. Any of the members of the Board wish to offer any amendments?
Yes, Madam Clerk, I have several here. First, I would ask to pull Item 26 at the request of the Solicitor General, and that's for additional position of Executive Assistant. Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Is she unanimous? Also referring to... The agenda, just need to make some corrections on the consent agenda. And, by the way, my last motion, no, okay. So on Item 10, we're going to add, that's a building permit refund to Tori Ragsdale. We're going to add the amount, and that amount should be in the amount of $110. Item 12, permit refund to Southern Electrical Contracting. Should read, the purpose of this request is to issue a refund in the amount of $110, and not, I think it's $370, to South-Southern Electrical Contracting for a temporary permit. Then again on Number 13, zoning verification letter request refund to Law Office of Nicola Change that amount to $100 for zoning verification letter request. Is there a motion to accept these corrections?
Motion. I'll still move, Mr. Chair.
Probably moved in second. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Is she unanimous? I also have an emergency item to be added, two of them actually. First item to be added is emergency item because we, the expiration of the refinance, refinancing of the bonds will happen prior to our next meeting. But the request is to add the URA Bond Refinance Resolution, which would save the county substantial amount of money by refinancing these bonds. Is there a second on it?
Second.
Any questions?
Yes.
Commissioner?
When was it brought to the attention of, I guess, the county that we needed to get this done? Because I just found a copy of this on the desk today.
You asking me?
Whoever can answer, say it. If it's you or the CFO.
CFO, Ms. Ramona. When was this first brought to your kitchen?
It was a resolution.
That we can save money by refinancing these bonds?
We presented it at the URA meeting, when you all had the joint meeting, last month. The URA Board approved it, and then we just got the resolution from the Bond Council. It didn't get to the agenda on Monday.
So what date was that, when you presented it there? Because we had already dismissed.
No, you had, no, so the URA has to prove it first, and then the Board has to prove it before it goes to validation.
Okay, I got one more. The question was actually, when was that meeting? Remind us the meeting, because we had already adjourned from that joint meeting when this presentation, I guess, was given, and we weren't notified as a Board that we could stay and hear the presentation. So that was several weeks ago, right?
That was a few weeks ago, that's correct. I talked to the Chairman about this before we did it with the URA, that there was an opportunity for us to refinance these bonds to get a lower interest rate. The bonds were initially issued in 2002, I believe, and we refinanced them in 2012 to get a lower interest rate at that time. The current interest rate is 5%. With interest rates being lower, we had the opportunity to get it to lower than the 2.2% and save approximately $400,000 for the remaining life of the bonds.
Okay, that's wonderful. The only, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
The only thing I want to say is, as a Board member, if we knew this three weeks ago, we're just getting that on our dais today to review it.
We just got, we just got the resolution for the Bond Council late, last week after the agenda meeting.
Last week?
Yes, after the agenda meeting.
Okay.
And then we had a holiday in between there. Any other questions? Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Is she unanimous?
Can we get this off?
Is that going on the regular agenda or consent agenda?
Consent agenda.
Thank you.
Another item for the consent agenda to be added as emergency item is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to enter into a lease agreement with Brothers Properties Phoenix LLC for the lease of office space located at 1895 Phoenix Boulevard. This is for the Board of Health, need to extend the lease with them until we can finalize the rest of the renovations for the facility at Battle Creek. Mr. Reed, is this for how many months?
One part of this is for six months. One suite is for six months, one suite is for one month, to the end of this year.
Until the end of the year. Because they are starting to transition back into the Battle Creek location. All right, I'll make the motions. There a second?
Second.
Probably moved in second by Commissioner Gregory. Are there any questions? Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Is she unanimous? I think that's all in mind. Any other Board member has any modifications, deletions? Okay, with that being said, I'll take a motion to adopt the agenda.
Some of, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'll second the motion. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Is she unanimous?
Our next item are Presentations and Proclamations. The first is a Veteran of the Month presentation.
All right. Of course, we honor one veteran every month, but every day our veterans should be honored. And with that, I appreciate and thank our veterans for all that you do for our country and all that you have done. But this month, we are honoring Major Ida Weiner. After attending the University of Texas ROTC Program in El Paso, she was commissioned as a Second Lieutenant in the US Army in July of 1980 at age 23. As a newly promoted Captain, Ida finished her Advanced Intelligence Officers Course at Fort, what's that Fort? It's H-U... Say it again. What you said. All right, we'll move on. Arizona, before heading to Fort Benning, Georgia in 1985 to become airborne qualified, Ida commanded a military intelligence company with seven corps during her first of three German overseas tours in 1988. Ida, as a captain, then served at Fort Bliss, Texas with the 11th Air Defense Brigade in late 1990 and early 1991. During Operation Desert Shield and during Operation Desert Storm Combat Operations, Ida proudly served as the US Army's first female Air Defense Brigade Intelligence Officer. Ida was recognized for her Desert Storm service by earning the Bronze Star. As a major, Ida served with, again, the Seventh Corps in Germany as a Brigade Counterintelligence Staff Officer in 1993. Soon she deployed again for three tours with the NATO Joint Task Force as the Joint Intelligence Officer in Zagreb, Croatia. I know I ruined that. And as the Senior Intelligence Officer with the Joint NATO Command in Naples, Italy. In 1995 through 1996, Ida completed her 20-year active-duty service career, serving as an Inspector General for the US Army Reserve Command at Fort McPherson, Georgia. Ida has served more than five years as an active member in good standing with the Clayton County Master Gardener Group. During her tenure, she also served as a Board Member, the corresponding Secretary of the Clayton County Master Gardeners Group from 2016 through 2018. Ida makes an exceptional difference for foster children in Clayton County, serving as a credential to Clayton County Court Appointed Special Advocate. Ida has actively been serving with the Clayton County Humane Society since 2015. Ida makes a life-scale difference for many Clayton County children and adults that are just learning to swim, as she teaches them basic swim skills with the Swimmer Man Swim School in Clayton County. Ida serves as a core and founding member of Clayton County's Armed Forces Senior Veterans. Ida and her husband of 35 years, also a retired US Army soldier, Wes Weiner, have made Jonesboro, Clayton County their home since 1996. Please help me welcome Major Ida Weiner.
Next, we have a proclamation. Judge Pamela Ferguson, Clayton County Visiting Friends.
Clayton County Board of Commissioners recognizes the Clayton County Visiting Friends Program. Whereas each year, hundreds of adults find themselves in need of a guardian, someone who will care for them and make decisions regarding their health and welfare. When a family member is unable or unwilling to take on this role, the Department of Human Services, or DHS, is appointed by the probate court to act as the guardian. And whereas one of the responsibilities of the DHS guardian is to visit their wards to check on their welfare, increased caseloads and understaffing often prevent them from visiting regularly. Studies have shown that individuals that have regular social interaction tend to thrive better than those without. Judge Pam Ferguson, Chief Judge of Clayton County Probate Court, saw the need for volunteers to visit these wards and began the Clayton County Visiting Friends Program in 2009 after God put this on her heart. And whereas Visiting Friends volunteers are people in the community willing to visit a ward from the Clayton County Guardianship caseload. A ward is matched with a volunteer, and they meet once or twice a month where they might read with them or just sit and talk with them, but mostly they become a friendly face that the ward can look forward to seeing at their visits. Clayton County Visiting Friends meets once a month at Clayton County Probate Court to report on their visits with their wards. And whereas the Clayton County Visiting Friends Program is always looking for volunteers to meet the growing number of individuals who find themselves in need of a guardianship. These individuals are often placed in assisted living facilities or nursing homes to live out their lives and all too often are forgotten. Donating a fraction of your time could make a world of difference in the lives of these individuals. Remember, having a friend is one of life's greatest gifts. Being one is even better. Now therefore, I, Jeffrey E. Turner, Chairman, on behalf of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, do hereby recognize the Clayton County Visiting Friends Program and call on every citizen of Clayton County that has the heart and time to support this program to make a difference in someone's life. In witness thereof, I have here unto, set my hand and caused the seal of Clayton County, Georgia, to be affixed this third day of December in the year 2019.
The Board will now hear public comments. Citizens will be given three minutes maximum time limit to speak before the Board of Commissioners. Please state your name, county of residency for the record. Speak clearly into the microphone, and speakers should be courteous, respectful, and not make any disparatory remarks or use abusive language when addressing the Board.
Ms. Quinn Howard.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Quinn Howard, resident of Clayton County. Chairman Turner, Commissioner Hambrick, Commissioner Davis, Commissioner Warner, and my Commissioner Gregory. The reason I'm here this evening is to just say thank you so much in securing us a location to have our community meeting on Mount Zion, and it was really, 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 really nice. In attendance, there was, we had a unit commander, we had the chief there, we also had Clayton County Refuge Control, and we had another chief, and we had a deputy chief. But more importantly, when I spoke to Commissioner Gregory and I mentioned to her my concerns as it relates to the community and how things were just going down here, she did not hesitate to just welcome me and assist me with calling this meeting. Not to mention, the meeting was a success. It was a huge turnout, and I'm just looking forward to working with you and doing many more things. But if I may just put this out there now, I don't know if you can help me with this, but I am in need of a couple of signs. Of course, I already spoke to the community members, and they're willing to help me get this taken care of, but we just need to get it taken care of. So if you can just help me in any way that you can, I do appreciate it very much. And also, I also want to thank you for taking the time out to come by to ensure that everything was going well, and thanks again for the refreshment. Everything was really, really well. And from my understanding and that community, I don't know how many people normally come out to community meetings, but I have you all to know that in the Marra area, the building was packed. So again, thank you, Commissioner Gregory, for all that you do, all that you've done, and all that you will continue to do to help us. Thank you, Commissioner.
Tawon McKibben. Tawon McKibben.
Good evening. My name is Tawon McKibben. I was here to announce that here in Jonesboro, it's been a while, we needed more stores, more grocery stores in Jonesboro, all since Ingalls has been gone. There's been, just nothing sitting in the parking lot there. We just have two regular grocery stores here in Jonesboro, and we need a department store here in Jonesboro. Also, we have to go to other cities here in Jonesboro to get to a department store. So a lot of people are needing more department stores and more grocery stores here in Jonesboro. And I was just letting y'all know that we need more department stores and more grocery stores here in Jonesboro. Thank you.
Thank you. Young man, I would encourage you to speak with Mayor Day and City Manager Ricky Clark. There are some things that are coming to the city of Jonesboro, so thank you for bringing that up. Judge Bobby Simmons, or I should say, I don't know what capacity you are, your judge, but I give you all the honor, Judge Bobby Simmons.
Judge Bobby Simmons, Jonesboro, Clayton County, Georgia. I'm not here on behalf of the Juvenile Court tonight, though. However, first, I want to say to each of you, I want to thank you for your support of the Clayton County, well, actually, Clayton County Community Services Authority. And that's who I'm here on behalf of tonight. I serve as their Chair of the Board. I'm here to give you some sad news in one respect in regard to the resignation of our Executive Director, effective December the 30th. That's Dr. Rhonda Kindred. She's been with us now for approximately about a year or so. So we will be seeking a new Executive Director, since you all are heavily supporting us. I wanted to let you know first. And if you have candidates that you think would be a suitable replacement for, please give us their names. I will be posting the vacancy here real soon. Also, there's another area that's dear to my heart that unfortunately, I've done a complete analysis of the transportation program that we had with the Community Services Authority. It was so vital to us at one point before we had MARTA. And then once we brought MARTA in for a while, then it left. So I went back and we kept it, even though we were bleeding red, but then MARTA came back again, and it even made it even worse, because we don't have the volume of transportation that we had before. We were draining probably about 15,000 to 20,000 a month in red as a result of that. So I'm going to have to probably close that program down. We have 90 days to notify them, we have to give them a 90-day notice at least, so that's still looking at about $45,000 that I'm gonna lose as a result of that. So I'm having a meeting on Thursday night to make a final determination as to whether or not we're gonna close it down. And I wanted to give you an opportunity, if you wanted to give us some comments or feed some information to us, my personal cell number 678-570-4745. You can get in contact with me before Thursday night. Of course, the Chair sits on the Board with us, so I wanted to let you know that. A final issue happens, I just changed, unfortunately, Commissioner Warner from your district to Mr. Davis district.
That's how we gonna do it.
And as a result of that, I found that there's a problem with the way we analyze property for our tax commission here, and that in the area that I'm living in, they're posting all the property as having basements when they don't really have basements. As a result, that prevents us from counting the total square footage in the household, because the basements are not counted as part of the square footage. So that is decreasing the value of the homes in that community tremendously. Now, it's definitely affected me, because I'm having to try to get that straight and prove to folks that I am not below grade, and as a result, I have a greater amount of square footage, which increases the value of the homes. I'm going to talk with the Commissioner about that, and we'll try to get out and see can we get that straight for that entire division. I thank you for your time. We have a cost of swearing in that I'm supposed to be at right now, and I want to get there to that, so I thank you for everything.
Yes, sir. Thank you for your time and for bringing that for the Board. My only concern about the transportation piece is that we make sure that we don't, if all costs possible, don't leave our citizens out.
Well, what I'm working with is I'm looking at MARTA Mobility, and I'm also looking at some other service providers that have a greater volume, and even if we have to try to work with them through our program as a partnership, creating a association, and if we can leverage the cost, and that's what the problem is, the cost for us maintaining the staff, the vehicles, the insurance, and all the costs associated with it, it just does not make it feasible for us to continue.
Yeah, as you said, I sit on the Board, so I see the numbers. So it's something that has to be done, but at the same time, never want to leave our citizens out in the cold. So we have to make sure we can do all that we can do for them.
Mr. Chair, one quick second, Judge. First of all, how sorry you left us, but...
Well, I had to get a single floor.
It's okay. I understand. No, I just wanted to mention as well about the transportation, I would like to have an offline conversation, because there are some funds that go into MARTA that are specific to our population. And up until the ATL Authority, those funds were being used with various service providers based upon a specific formula. Those formulas have now changed, and so there may be an opportunity that we can explore, maybe for those individuals that were utilizing the system to now participate on the MARTA Mobility System with some funding. So you all may be able to get some funding. Just an opportunity, we need to discuss it. Don't know, but we need to discuss it.
Get with you. Thank each of you.
Thank you.
And thank you for your service.
Zariah, pass more.
My name is Zariah. May I pass more? My address is 1109 Valentine Court, Riverdale, Georgia 30296, and I'm super sad by the library. I want to be the first one when it opens, and I love reading books.
She's super excited about this library. It's literally right in front of our neighborhood. We can walk there. So when it was being built, we didn't know what it was gonna be, and once they put that sign up, and she saw it, every day we have to ride by by the fire. She's like, when is this library gonna open? I want to be the first one there. So I was like, Zariah, we don't know, we just got to keep watching, but she's very excited. We're excited that we have a library close to us to where we can walk to, because she absolutely loves the library. She loves books, she's a bookworm, so we really appreciate that. We really needed that in our area.
Okay. And you will be invited.
Thank you.
Thank you for sharing with us. Mickey Garber.
Mickey Garber, Unincorporated, Rex, Georgia. I doubt that I can beat that last speaker. However... However, I'll give it my best effort. My subject of conversation this evening is missed opportunities. What do I mean by missed opportunities? An opportunity to advertise and promote our beautiful Clayton County during the Thanksgiving holiday as a clean, healthy, and safe place to call home. What do I mean by missed opportunity? An opportunity to celebrate our county's birthday, November 30th, as a clean, healthy, and safe place to be proud to call Clayton County our home. With being reminded of missed opportunities, I feel like it's my obligation to remind you of upcoming opportunities. The opportunity of Christmas and New Year to promote our county, our county's cleanliness and safety as a place to move to, not from, and a wonderful place to call Clayton County home. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I believe it's Kalida Passmore. She's ahead of you, ma. She's like, she's about business. Andrea Rhimes. Andrea Rhimes. Andrea, I'm sorry. Andrea Rhimes. Andrea.
I apologize, I was signing here, not coming to comment.
Not a problem, ma, but if you'd like to come say something, feel free, no? All right. Thank you for coming. David Devers.
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 I am a citizen of Clayton County. I have two areas I want to talk about. First area involves Transportation and Development Department and the Commissioners, including the Chairman. The proposed annual operating budget for fiscal year-end in 6/30/20, dated 5/14/19, by Ramona Bevins, Chief Financial Officer, has the capital budget with the capital purchase being covered by the 2004, 2009, and 2015 special purpose local option sales tax, which is the SPOSS collection. The 2004 SPOSS ended December 2008. The 2009 SPOSS ended December of 2014. The 2014 SPOSS referendum was voted in on 5/20/2014, which will run for six years. Any funds left after it ended automatically carries forward at the year-end. The regular business meeting on November 5, 2019, there was $14,430,778 asked for approval with the funding being available through the 2009 and 2015 SPOSS Park Improvement Funds. The regular business meeting on November 19, which y'all approved tonight, the amount, there was five of them, all funded available through 2009 SPOSS. It is totaled out to be $1,464,000. Why I bring this up, Forest Parkway Road between Highway 42 and Jonesboro Road has so many potholes and have been patched so many times, it definitely needs to be resurfaced for several years. I remember Chairman Jeff Turner attended one of our Foxfield Neighborhood Watch Meeting, and he was asked that question, "When was Forest Parkway going to be resurfaced?" He stated it was in the planning stage and would happen in the near future. That has not happened. We seem to have an abundance of SPOSS money left over, taking care of everything but resurfacing roads that needed to be done. The second area concerns the Commissioners, including the Chairman. I read in a newspaper, I'm running out of time, I read in a newspaper this past weekend about police officers paid throughout the metro area, and Clayton County is one of the lowest. If we have this surplus of money and the SPOSS programs, we need to take care of our police department that risked their lives to protect and defend the citizens of Clayton County. Give them the raise that they need and deserve. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, that concludes public comment.
Next is the approval of the consent agenda items.
Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Hearing now, those in favor, aye. Opposed, it's unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, that ends the agenda except for the appointments.
All right, first appointment for this evening is appointment to the Library Board to replace Randy Muff. He resigned in October 8 of 2019. The term will begin immediately and will expire on May 21, 2022. Any recommendations? I'd like to recommend Emmanuel Adeyemo. That's A-D-E-Y-E-M-O. Adeyemo. Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye. Opposed, it's unanimous. Next Board appointment is to the Board of Health, Dr. Timothy Brown. Term will expire on 12/31/2019. Appointment is for six years. New term will begin December 31, 2019, and will expire December 31, 2025. Any recommendations?
I move reappoint Timothy Brown.
Second.
Probably moved in second, those in favor, aye. Opposed, it's unanimous. Mr. Reed, is there...
Yes, we have executive session on litigation, personnel, and real estate.
All right, there's a motion. I'm gonna offer a motion to go into executive session for real estate, personnel, and litigation. Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye. Opposed, it's unanimous. Everybody have a good night. All right, motion to go, Rick Abeng. Probably move in second, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Mr. Reed.
Would you like to take them together?
Yes, please.
Okay, first is a offer to purchase property located at 7356 Merlin Way, Riverdale, Georgia, and amount of $70,000 purchased, once there's a closing that takes place. The second is a settlement in the amount, I'm sorry, settlement in the case of Porter versus Clayton County pursuant to terms of an agreement and general release, which I'll provide to the clerk.
All right, is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Hearing now, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Hambrick.
It's unanimous. Wasn't there, that's all, there was no real estate?
No, but the first was, the first was...
That's right, that's right, that's right. All right, so at this time, we'll entertain a, yes. Oh, you, come on, I know there's something else we had to do.
Esteemed Board, on behalf of Court Administration, Human Resources is requesting to hire Shantae Tate, Law Clerk Senior for Superior Court at Grade 27 Step 10, total compensation $87,239.
All right, is there a motion? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Probably moved in second, any questions? All right, those in favor, aye. Opposed, it's unanimous.
Thank you.
This time, I'll entertain a motion for a nomination for the Chief Legal Staff Attorney.
I nominate we appoint Mr. Chuck Reed as our Staff Attorney.
Is there a second? Can't get it, is there a second?
You slow, second.
Apparently. Probably moved in second, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Motion to adjourn.
Motion.
All second, those in favor, aye. Opposed, it's unanimous.